All right.
If everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Okay. Hey Nancy. She said I have to say it again. All right, we're beginning our regular board meeting number two. Thursday, January 12th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m., the day of our Lord, and... You know what else it is? It's Anthony Traficanty's 56th birthday.
56th.
Anthony? I'm sorry, I said it out loud.
I knew you were going to do it.
You know, all I can say is that everyone up here, except Nancy, well, no, including Nancy, we will all take 56 again.
Oh, you made my day.
We will all take 56 again.
I'll take 46.
Yeah, well, we would all gladly do that.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Okay, well, before we move any further, Sarah, I know you have Krista Beniston. Is that how you pronounce it? Beniston? And she is a new employee for the Port Authority that represents Mahoning, Trumbull County, and the rest of the valley in all the projects, and do an amazing job on our behalf with economic development. And you're going to tell us how Krista is going to bring 10 new flights going to Florida every day, starting next week.
Free, too.
And Atlantic City.
Starting next week.
And Atlantic City.
There you go.
Thank you. We wish you... Well, you having provided the introduction, I'm going to ask Krista to stand up and say a word or two about this important project that we were just now launching and how we'll follow up with all of you. Thank you. Now, go ahead and stand right there.
Thank you all for having me, Krista Beniston. I was previously the Director of Zoning and Development with Boardman Township. I think I've worked with you all in a little bit of capacity at that, but very excited to be at the port and hopefully help support them and all the efforts that I can throughout the community. We received a U.S. Economic Development Grant for the airport to a development strategy, kind of looking at business attraction and mainly different development, how we make the future of the airport. So that was a $335,000 grant. We're just kicking off this kind of development strategy. We'd love for you all to be involved. We're going to do some one-on-one interview meetings in the next few weeks. So, you know, we'd love to get your inputs, and then we'll certainly follow up with kind of the outcomes of what that is.
Yes. Specifically, what, like, what, is that a grant, like, to bring more economic development to the port? I mean, to the airport?
So one of the things, they're going to... The first part is kind of doing a market analysis to see, you know, what really are those trends and where we could fit in and what those gaps are so we can position, you know, our facilities and staff and what we need. And then the other part of that is really to try to do outreach to different businesses, to, you know, try to do kind of business attraction.
I would like to see the restaurant.
Yeah, no, that's definitely something I know that's, we've been talking about quite a bit.
I mean, I think having that there could be something as a development thing and also it's an entertainment where you go to the airport and, you know, you have dinner, you can have meetings there. I mean, there's no other, there's no better look than to look out at the runways and the airbase and just be a part of that. So that's fine.
So how long have you been on board now, Krista?
This is just my second month, so...
Second month, okay.
Still a lot to learn, but it's been the fun.
How many times do they call you a day from Boardman?
So far, not too many. Yeah, I'm here to help any community, you know. I've got the kind of the zoning background, so if there's anything I can never do, I'm happy to, you know, give my two cents, but...
It's good to have when you're working for the port for a while.
I still see those great big planes with the props on them flying over my house, you know, pretty regularly, you know, and I can hear the "whoa, whoa, 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 whoa", coming over, and I look up, you know. It's nothing like the days when John Boccheri used to fly them out of there because he would go right down and it seemed like he'd be over my house by about 20 feet, purposely, because I would get a text beforehand. So welcome. We appreciate you coming and giving us a little insight and the fact that now you're part of the Port Authority team. There's a good bunch of people there who do an amazing job, so...
Thank you for your time.
Anthony, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to say it was wonderful working with you, Boardman. I know you were there, the origins of Boardman Zoning. And I actually was there a few days ago, and they said, "Well, she's not here no more", so now I see why. But you did a great job. But, you know, speaking of the airplanes, that airport wouldn't be there if it wasn't Congressman Traficanty. And I have the entire history of that airport. And one of the things I would suggest to our board and to the Port Authority is there's a new congressman up there, Mr. Joyce. You need to reach out to him big time because if they lose any more airplanes out of that airbase, they, it could be closed to the BRAC Commission. And I know they're short. So that would be something in your endeavors is to maybe reach out to him and say, "Hey, this airport is so vital. It's over 3,000 jobs and spinoffs that that airport does. It's such..." And it keeps our airport strong and vice versa. So just a suggestion, something that we're going to be doing as well.
Okay.
And I think, didn't Congressman Ryan just bring the money, funding for eight new... Five, would have those planes?
They're on the shortlist.
C-130s.
Yeah, they're on the shortlist.
Right, they're on the shortlist.
So I think we're going to get that, too.
That's something.
Yeah, no, definitely reach out. That's a great suggestion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Sarah, Krista. All right, move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments today? Okay, seeing none, move on to approval of the reorganizational meeting from Monday, January 9th, 2023, and approval of previous minutes of board meeting number one, Monday, January 9th, 2023, and approval of bills for payment. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Aguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditschler?
Yes. Journal entry is number one.
Motion approved. Journal entry is number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Aguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditschler?
Yes. Okay, travels, convention of visitors. Linda, you can travel anywhere you want. You can't go to Pennsylvania, though.
Well... Good morning, commissioners. Letter A is our day-to-day travel for the Convention of Visitors Bureau, which includes attending all of our association meetings, seminars, conferences, statewide workshops within the state of Ohio and Pennsylvania because sometimes things happen in Western PA for the year 2023, and it covers travel and trade shows. And I'm sorry, for the year 2023, and extends into January and February of '24 to cover travel and trade shows that happen early in the year. And that is estimated at $7,500, non-general. And letter B is specific travel to two golf shows we've been attending with very good results, and we want to continue that. One is the Michigan Golf Show in Novi, Michigan, the largest consumer...
Oh, man.
The largest consumer golf show in the country.
Just stab us Ohioans in the heart.
And the Rochester Golf Show in Western New York on March 17th and 19th, 2023. Estimated cost is $1,500.
Excellent. You guys do a great job bringing the shows in, and whether it's golf, wrestling, wine, trails, everything. You know, so I'm very proud of you and the job you guys do. Okay, county courts.
Good morning. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
It's hard to follow Linda. My mind is excited. I'm asking for travel for the four county court judges and myself through, in Ohio, for education and keeping up with legislative updates. It'll be estimated cost of $8,000, non-general. County courts probation, letter D, sorry, is the same thing, but the probation officers are required to have educational training through the year, and it's estimated to be $4,000. And it's all, both are within the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Engineers.
Morning, everybody. Letter E is our annual travel for the professional staff to attend various conferences through CAO, ODOT, Survey Traffic, Road and Bridge, et cetera, for the year 2023 in the estimated amount of $25,000, non-general funds.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Hazmat, this on F, hazmat, there is an amendment there. It's $2,000, not 1,000. Not sure. You're going to do that, Audrey?
Yeah. This is to attend state training conferences, TAC meetings, training seminars within the state of Ohio for the year 2023, estimated at $2,000. And it's just non-general.
Okay, good deal. JJC.
Good morning. Happy birthday, Commissioner Traficanty. Letter G is for the judge to attend all trainings or blanket travels throughout the state of Ohio and Pennsylvania. It'll be non-general and general and continuing education when offered. H is for the court staff to attend trainings throughout the state of Ohio and Pennsylvania, and it also will be general, non-general, with continuing education when offered. And J is our journal of travel to transport and visit youth in placement or detention facilities within the state and Pennsylvania. That's also general, non-general.
Thank you. K, prosecutors. Linda, don't...
Good morning, commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed J.
Missed Job and Family?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and go out of order?
Yeah, go ahead. We're easy.
Anything out of order, never. Yeah, this is for our attorneys and staff, travel within the state of Ohio for different educational purposes to take depositions in regard to the cases. And it's estimated at $20,000 from the Justice Department.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Audrey, sorry, we'll go back to J, Jobs and Family.
Yes, we can. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Nancy, Audrey, and Jim, and happy birthday, Commissioner Traficanty. Letter J, Job and Family Services. This travel is to attend all Canton District Fiscal Meetings, ODJFSA conferences, OCDA meetings, conferences, fiscal seminars, attorney networking, adult protection services training, and CLEs for the year 2023. The estimated total is $10,000 out of the non-general fund. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, L, recycling.
Good morning, commissioners. Happy birthday, Commissioner Traficanty. Audrey, Nancy. Item L is a request to attend the U.S. Composting Council Conference in Ontario, California. It is the largest composting conference in North America. We are looking to get some additional information on commercial composting as we are looking to kick off the endeavor with Second Harvest Food Bank here in the coming months. Item M is our general travel, state of Ohio, Western Pennsylvania, for US EPA, Organization of Salt Waste Districts, Ohio Association of Litter Prevention and Recycling Professionals and other type of meetings and seminars.
All right, thank you, Lou. All right, a motion to approve travels.
Motion to approve travels, letters A through M.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Aguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditschler?
Yes. Agreements, auditors.
Good morning.
Hey, Ralph.
This is a great Lake Business product for our GIS Square 9 system. The licensing is court renewal for $9,206.87. It's non-general. By way of explanation, Square 9 is the system that records electronic data collection as properties pass through the engineer's office, GIS, the auditor's office, recorder. This is our recording system, so at any time we could tell someone exactly where this property is in the process. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ralph. Convention of visitors.
Good morning again. Letter B is an agreement with Great Lakes Publishing for 2023 advertising services, both digital and print in the various publications such as Ohio Magazine, Ohio on Tap, SIP Magazine. They produce several different things, and this is in an amount not to exceed $40,000 per year.
Correct. Thank you, Linda. Dana.
Dana, this is the agreement with Tele Solutions. We use this company over the years. This is for network and telecom cabling for the entire county and programming services per se. This is the blanket for the year, not to exceed $50,000, and it's non-general.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Engineers.
Commissioners, letter D is an agreement with Dalen M. Pride Consulting Services. This is for Bureau Motor Vehicle Taxi District Audit in the amount of $25,000, these are non-general funds. Letter E is an agreement with Professional Services, Inc., otherwise known as PSI, for material testing services in the amount of $49,999, non-general funds. And letter F is an agreement with ACA Engineering, also for material testing services, in the amount of $49,999, non-general funds.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Recycling.
Commissioners, item G is an agreement at city of Youngstown for their recycling programs, its community assistance as well as education, litter control. Basically, it's the mini version of Salt Waste District in the city of Youngstown. Item H is an agreement with Hazmat, provide hazardous materials response. This is the, in the event of a tractor trailer or something of that nature overturning, they can contain the spill and prevent it from leaching into the environment.
Thank you. Sanitary, Pat.
Commissioners, letter I is an agreement with Dinsmore &amp; Scholl LLP for required services related to the Source System Refunding and Improvement Revenue Bond Series 2017 in the amount of $5,500. These are non-general funds.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve agreements.
Motion to approve agreements, letters A through I.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Aguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditschler?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Aguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditschler?
Yes. Resolutions, Convention of Visitors. Linda, you're the star of the show today.
We have start of the year business to take care of here. This is a resolution authorizing a support grant from the Convention of Visitors Non-General Fund of $7,500 to the Ohio Athletic Committee. This is for their annual March Ohio State Wrestling Championships, which are held over two weekends at the Cavelli Center. March 17th through the 19th will be junior high, freshmen and girls. So all of those students and their families will be coming to town to watch the tournament. And then March 24th through the 26th will be the grade school championships. Again, students, parents, family, friends, all coming to town, filling our hotels, keeping our restaurants busy, shopping in our stores, filling their cars with gas. It is a very large economic impact to the area. And again, this is in the amount of $7,500. They've been coming, I believe it's since 2011. So this is a wonderful tournament.
It is.
And great for the economy here.
I'll tell you, and, you know, coming from Fitch, we always had a good wrestling team. And, you know, and it's just the, the parents, everybody's involved, you know, in wrestling. It's such a great sport, you know, with respect to, you know, they travel, they bring people, they stay, you know, like you're saying. They spend a lot of money and they do a lot of good for the community. Very disciplined, and, you know, they do a great job. So that's always a nice event. So thank you. Dog Warden, Diane.
Good morning, commissioners. Happy birthday, Commissioner Traficanty. B is a resolution approving the appointment of a part-time kennel canvasser for the department. C and D are, we are elevating current part-time employees, and we're elevating them to full-time. One to a full-time deputy dog warden. He will eventually, he'll be trained and he'll go out on the road. And another to in the kennel, he'll be a kennel canvasser.
Excellent. Thank you. How many dogs do we have right now, Diane, at the pound?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Yeah, we're, it's, we are consistently full anymore. We're not seeing any dips, or, so it's, it's really tough.
Wow. And I know I speak to Jane quite often from animal charity, and they're just overwhelmed.
Yeah, it's, you know what? It seems to be that way across the board. We rescues that normally pull from us are full. We, we have a lot of that right now. It's across the board.
She's trying to get into the new building and just never ends. You see the write-ups.
Yeah, we're afraid this is the new normal now.
Yeah, it's a sad, sad thing. You know, I went past the Birds of Flight rescue in Canfield that bought the new property over there. I didn't realize where it was, and I just happened to be going down there, and I saw the sign up. And I thought, wow, what an amazing, you know, opportunity to move to something, you know, that big and that substantial because when I picked the owl up off the road that was alive and took it to her, I drove out by the Eastwood Mall to the sanctuary that she had there. It was, what, probably two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago. And it literally was her home.
Right.
I mean, you, she gave me directions and said, "Just follow the signs". And when I went down, I thought I was lost. I went down just like a side street in a subdivision, and it had a sign up, said, "Turn here", and I turned into her driveway and it had a stop sign. "Don't go beyond this point." And, you know, and I had to literally just bring the bird up in a box and leave it on her front door and step and fill out a paper and do it. And then they called me about an hour later to tell me they received it and what they were going to do. And, and, I mean, it was, you know, you look and you see people that do things like that, whether it's, you know, Diane Lessardi, or, I forget the young lady, the woman's name from Birds of Flight.
Oh, yeah.
And, but...
Merritt. Last name's Merritt.
Merritt. But she was so nice, and here she's doing this all strictly on donations. Then we look at animal charity, and we see all the work that they have that they're inundated of. And what's, what's such a fallacy? Is there a quasi-government entity? I mean, really, you know, it seems like an opportunity just not to be funded by the state, to get some additional funds to help. And right now, it's just an overwhelming situation, whether it's, you know, birds, dogs in the dog pound, and whether it's the animal charity that encompasses every animal.
Yep.
You know, and it's sad, you know. And, you know, you see homeless children and veterans and people, and, you know, it's like, you know, you want to make sure that you help everyone, but, you know, there needs to be a champion in every category that tries to pursue to do the right thing and not a political thing. So, anyway, thank you. Appreciate that.
My name's Heather Merritt.
Heather, yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay, last but not least, sanitary.
Commissioners, letter E is a resolution of necessity to purchase automobile parts from NAPA. This is under the Sourcewell Purchasing Contract in the estimated amount of $90,000.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Resolutions, motion approved.
Motion approved resolutions, A through E.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Aguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditschler?
Yes. Look at that. We all, we're probably almost going to make our 10:30 meeting, but... You know, you know, but we haven't talked yet. So one thing I have to add, you know, today's Anthony's day. We don't want to minimize it in any way, shape or form, but the young lady to the right of me has a birthday in two days. Her birthday is Saturday. So, you know, happy birthday, Carol, on Saturday. Happy birthday, Anthony, today. And we want all the ladies in the audience who we know that are excellent singers to lead us. Because I'm looking straight ahead and I see three guys directly in front of me, or four, with the gentleman from the Sheriff's Department, and these two over here, I know they can't sing. So we have to sing "Happy Birthday, Anthony" and Carol. So... Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Anthony, Carol. Happy birthday to you. So how about that, Lou? Thank you. So, anyway, we will, we will start on my right today. Anything you'd like to talk about Carol?
I just want to thank everyone. Welcome aboard, Krista. Keep up the good work. Port's best thing for economic development, and you will fit in just fine here. Good luck with everything. And everyone else. And Linda, so many things going on.
On your birthday, if you're looking for something special to do, the Ohio Wine Producers is having an event at Stanbach Auditorium called the Winter Wine Affair, where regional wineries will be there sampling their wines. Cheese producers, vendors.
I went to that last year.
It's Saturday. There's two sessions, afternoon and evening. That'd be a great birthday activity, Carol.
Just stay for both. And get an Uber driver. That's a good deal. No, everybody have a great weekend. Enjoy. I don't know, today's supposed to be 50. Tomorrow's supposed to be at zero, probably. But enjoy the weekend, be safe. And all the activities around Mahoning County, there are a lot of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony.
Thank you for all the birthday wishes. Carol, happy birthday to you. Krista, congratulations on your new position and wish you all the best. And actually, we had another birthday last night. It was an anniversary. 65 years of the Austin Town Democrat Club. They had their regular meeting, and then they had a big cake there. Some of the members who were there were, two of the oldest, actually, were Ken Corano and Walt Doesney, 65 years ago. And this club has stayed super strong through the years, and they're very active. Of course, they had Fernando's Pizza. They had whatever you wanted to eat and a huge cake, and it was really nice. And Ken Corano ran a great meeting. Lauren McNally showed up. It was a really nice thing honoring, honoring the club. On another note, we lost another rock god, Dave, Jeff Beck.
Hmm, really?
Jeff Beck died. You know, he joins the annals of Malcolm Young, Eddie Van Halen, now Jeff Beck.
Oh, yeah.
No, me and all...
It's sad. It's sad. Those are the guys that wrote the tunes that guys like me still try to sit there and figure out, "How the heck did he play that?". So I just wanted to say Jeff Beck was one of the, one of the greatest guitarists of all time. No question.
You have to check out a video online of Jeff Beck playing Nessun Dorma, Luciano Pavarotti.
Really?
It will blow your socks off.
I'm not surprised.
What he does with that guitar.
It is, it's amazing.
Check it out. How do you know a guitar could, you know, sound like that? Playing classical, you know, classical operatic music, but amazing.
And if you remember, he was Rod Stewart's guitarist for many, many years ago. I'm really angry with myself.
Yes.
I'll check that out. Thank you. Thank you.
Wow, that's, that's pretty amazing. You know, and I, I, I see a lot of these, you know, guitar, the, the different bands from way back, you know, and, and, you know, seventies, eighties. My, my area is mostly, I like late sixties, seventies, you know, and, and into the early eighties, because in the early eighties, I had a nightclub in Youngstown that, that we had a lot of bands at, so. I mean, pretty amazing bands. Huey Lewis and the News, we had the flashbacks, Left End played there all the time. And a lot of regional bands, Donny Irish, Michael Stanley, and different things from the area.
And Sweat and Tears was there too.
No, I had the Guess Who, was there? No, The Fix, I had The Fix there. Anyway, there was, there was quite a few great bands, so I, I love music, but the only instrument I can play is the radio. And Anthony's amazing with the guitar. And a friend of mine that lives about five houses down, Ronnie Latone, that owns Superior Auto Body, he decided about, I don't know how many years ago, to learn to play the drums on his own. Now, on Thursday nights or Tuesday night, one or the other per week, they get together in his basement and they play. They had, and they had two guys playing guitar, a woman that used to be a lead singer in a group in the Akron-Cleveland area, and she is there, two guitar players, a bass and lead, and, and Ronnie on drums. And I went there last Thursday night, I think it was Thursday. And it, I mean, I sat there for two hours. They, they have, they're trying to get 40 songs, and they're up to like 22. And I sat and listened to them play, and I'm just blown away how somebody can, can stand there and play the guitar and, and hit, and just join in and, and play all of the, the song throughout. They don't read music? And I asked Ronnie, and I think it's John Dietz was playing lead guitar, and he said, he said, I don't know how to read music. And I said, you're kidding me? And I said, well, how do you learn that? And he walks over to me and he's got his guitar and he says, he said, there's only 11 chords on a guitar, 11 or something, is it 11?
That's, that's a lot. Most rock songs are only four chords.
But, yeah, but he said there's only 11 total on the guitar. I think he said there was only 11 notes or chords or something. And, and then he's, he's showing me, he started the top, worked down, the bottom worked up, and I'm thinking, oh my God, it's like handing me a paper and saying, reading this Chinese writing, you know? And, and it's, it just amazes me, and I'm so impressed by people. And Anthony's self-taught, and, and he can play like no one, nobody's business. So it's, it's, it's all cool to watch, because it's, you know, it's, it's an art, it's a, you know, it's something we all do. And while I'm talking music, you know, I'll tell you another story so we can waste time and make Nancy mad, but I had to, I had to go to get an MRI on my back yesterday morning. And I have, I have an issue getting in one of those MRI machines, if you've ever been in one. You know, it's like they stick you in a tunnel and they're gonna like Spock and shoot you to wherever it's at, you know? And so I scheduled it, the only place I could find that said open MRI, and it was on Belmont Avenue going out towards the, where's, what's the restaurant that's real good out there on Belmont? Station Square. It's right by Station Square. So I get, I get there and, you know, and they normally have, you know, when you're in an MRI, that loud banging noise you hear, right? Well, when you're in that coffin of it that's enclosed, that noise is elevated to the 10th degree because it's all encapsulated. But out there on Belmont, they had an open MRI. And it was just like two big buns, like you were a piece of, of meat on a hamburger. And, and they lay on, on a little bed and it rides in, and you're underneath it, and it's around you, it's about eight feet in diameter, but you're laying there and everything's open. And because it's all open, you know, the noise isn't as, as dramatic or as impactful, you know? So when you're in the encapsulated, when they put headphones on you to try and, you know, fool you into the music, you know, and, and you're trying to not get paranoid, you know, opening your eyes and seeing that you can't get out, you know? And, but in this one, you know, it was all open, the noise was minimized, the radio's next to me, and he goes, it's Sirius Satellite, what do you want on? I said seventies. So he puts the radio on seventies music, I'm laying there, and like nothing, you know, no impact at all. And I thought, well, seventies, the songs are a little shorter, so I gotta listen to 10 songs. He said, I've been there 30 minutes. And I said, I have 10 songs, it'll go pretty quick. I laid back, and I'm telling you, Anthony, the songs, I'm just laying on my back and I'm listening, and all of a sudden, three, four, five, six, eight, you know, I hear 10 songs, the 11th one started, and the 11th one was, was Back in Black.
Right, you wanted to stay.
The 11th song was Back in Black, and I'm laying there and I'm going, oh, this is cool, you know? And we just get into like the first 30 seconds of it, and it shuts down, he goes, okay, you're finished. I went, can you finish that song? And then he started laughing. He says, that was all good. But the good thing it did was, is I was coming back towards downtown then, and I was able to stop at Crabbe's. They're open again.
Are they really?
And, but you can't get stuff grilled. I couldn't get eggs or anything, but, you know, the corned beef at Crabbe's, it just melts in your mouth. I got a corned beef sandwich, it was just excellent. Well, I, I'll quit rambling, but congratulations, Krista, welcome. Great group that you're working with, and we look forward to all of bigger and better things. Anthony and I and Carol will be expecting to go to Atlantic City in Florida shortly. From Youngstown.
Maybe Italy.
I don't think you have an Italy trip. You might have trans.
Diane, thank everybody at the pound, you know, God bless you guys.
Right.
You know, I can't, I can't do anything but walk through there, and when I come out of there, I wanna, I wanna open my door and bring every one of them home, you know, it just breaks my heart, so. Adopt a dog. We have our eight-year-old Shepherd Boxer mix, 92 pounds, that sleeps between my wife and I and pushes with her feet to get more room. And by the end of the night, both of us are hanging on the edge of a king-size bed, so. And she was a dog from the pound, so. All right, with that said, I will ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Aguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditschler?
Yes. Next meeting? No, it's, it's not next week. It is January 26th at 10:00 AM. And.
Right here.
Right here at the same place.